I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole, for October 11th, 2022 at 5:40 PM. Tennant's roll call.
Other person's wolf?
Here.
Terrence?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Kapusta?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Kabuki?
Kabuki here.
I'm sorry.
You did it again.
Kabaki?
Here. He's here too.
Madden?
We have a quorum. Thank you. Statement of public notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with the public meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of the minutes from September 27th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business. Continued discussion on the mayor's proposed 2023 operating budget. Just to get you up to speed, it's very much a work in progress at this point. The one thing I can report is the tax rate and the levy will remain the same regardless of what changes right now we're going through and we're adjusting where the allocations of the budget's going. We're still working through the healthcare portion where we had anticipated a significant savings on that for a couple of reasons. It's not coming out as smoothly as we want, so we're going to be, we're still looking at some other options and we will be presenting some, but it's very much work in progress. So the one, one thing I did want to bring up tonight, Alderman Kabaki did contact me last week and I looked into it further regarding the
Library?
No, the, the COLA pay versus and the merit pay. So we proposed a 2% cost of living increase with a 1% merit increase. Looking into it further, what that creates a problem for if your goal this year is to try to get our employees into a more competitive pay range is we have about 20, 20-ish employees that are at the top of their pay range. So the 1%, they would get as a stipend, but it doesn't change your base at all. And Alderman Kabaki had made the recommendation, and actually I do agree with it, for this one year to essentially, we're just going to do a 3% COLA increase and then move the range 3%. Our goal is actually this year is to do a salary study so that we get salaries on track to where they should be versus where they are right now. But this is something you can do in the short term to get us closer to where we need to be. Thoughts? Discussion? Feedback?
I'm happy that we're doing it that way. Yes. Yeah.
So it, like I said, it affects about 20 employees who, and those are long-term employees that have been here a while. They're the ones that are at the top of their scales. And I think that's about it. Any other comments from any, when it's looked through their budget so far and where we're at?
I do have a question in there.
Yes.
Because I've had some calls lately in regards to the Boxhorn launch. I saw the fees in here for Idaho oil launch. Are the Boxhorn fees in there as?
All over. We're going to increase all the fees to the level that we can on all the launches.
But what I'm saying is, is can we separate, because I got the number from Sharon in regards to what we got from Boxhorn. Can we separate those out because for like the fees that are generated by Boxhorn can be used to?
You mean just for Boxhorn? I'm not sure if you necessarily want to do that. I think, do we have to for one? Do you know? I think we can just, so the reason you wouldn't want to do it is I think you'd want to pool all the, all the launch fees that we get and then be able to allocate those to the areas that need them the most. So if the, if Boxhorn truly does need improvements, then we can use those fees for the improvements at Boxhorn. And maybe the fees we collect just at Boxhorn might not be enough, but maybe another launch that doesn't need it right now is collecting extra fees.
Right.
It gives us more flexibility, I think.
Okay. Do we have anywhere in here or do we need to put in here? Because one of the complaints I've been receiving lately is that the launch is shallow where people can't even use it.
I assume you're talking about specifically Boxhorn?
Yes. I know they were out there dredging and the resident caught wind of it, went out there, thought it was fine, and then a month later I get a text from him stating they can't even put a boat in there again.
Yeah, and I think that's probably a better question for Tom Zager to be able to, I can have him follow up with you on that.
Okay.
Quite honestly, I've never used that launch besides walk out on the pier
Me neither.
Take some pictures of the sunset.
Yeah.
But it's
Yeah, you know, duck hunters, yeah.
Yeah, and I get it.
And that's how come he, you know.
Big Lake does have challenges with the bogs that come in and water levels do fluctuate on that lake a little differently than the other ones, but I could have, I'll have Tom follow up with you on that.
Find a way to, you know, put that in the budget to keep
I don't know if that's a budget item more so is
I have no idea either.
You know, regular maintenance and what we can do for maintenance on it.
Okay.
So I'll have Tom follow up with you.
Okay. Excellent.
I have a question of Brittany, and I hate to put you on the spot. I apologize for not calling you in advance. Are there any of your programs that we're able to charge for?
Nope, turn it on. That front.
Up, push up. Hello. So in terms of charging for programs, really from a public perspective, I would have to look into that more. I, it has always been my understanding that we weren't supposed to charge for anything, any program unless it had like a materials cost associated to it. And so we've never charged because again, because the public, you know, pays taxes, we, you know,
Sure.
make it for free. I could look into that more, but I would, I would be very hesitant to do that.
Well, we've got recreational programs too that our taxpayers pay additional funds for, and I thought that if there's an opportunity to generate a little bit more revenue out of the library, it'd be a good thing.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that we've been trying really hard to do the last couple of years with our Friends of the Library is to increase the amount of fundraising we've been doing. And we charge for those events because then the Friends are, you know, fundraising for the library. And we actually have done quite a bit of fundraising this year and we're going to continue to increase that. Like I said, I can look into it, but I would have to do some more research on that, and I will.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments as we work through this?
I have a question about with that grant. Does that mean what they had been asking for, they're going to be needing less? Or was that something that was an extra that wasn't included in what you were asking for? Just so I'm clear on that grant.
So the plan is still to spend $425,000. An inclusive playground in and of itself is very, very expensive just on the flooring, you know, the rubber flooring, making it accessible to everybody and having as many pieces as we can. The problem for us is that most of the time when you build an inclusive park, it's a brand new park. It's new to the community. We're taking our biggest, most highly-used park and changing portion of what it's for. So we need to make sure we're still meeting the needs of the current users as well as increasing the use for kids who may have mobility issues or sensory issues. So the rubber flooring is super expensive, costs are still going up, metal costs are going up, our shipping costs are going up. So we'll still, we're going to stay under that $425,000 we asked for. It's just going to give us the opportunity to get more things. If we don't take that, we're basically going to have a playground piece and some swings similar to what's out there and not much more than that.
So, so there wasn't going to be a big piece like that in your proposal?
There was going to be a big piece, but not with towers and slides. It was more of all of the ramp structure to get to places and a few things.
And was it planning on being an inclusive for kids with special needs?
It would be inclusive, but it just wouldn't have the wow factor for other kids that are coming there that have been coming there for years. The people who live in the apartment complex across the street, those kids come over and play. We have a playground program there. And so you kind of scale it down, like alone, the flooring is probably going to cost us $175,000 at next year's prices. So like when you start looking at playground pieces, how expensive they are, I have a catalog if anybody wants to take a look. A standard playground piece that will entertain 50 to 60 kids is between $150 and $250,000. So it would be a playground piece and the flooring, and that's kind of it. Now we're going to have the capability to add musical elements and some standalone pieces where a child in a wheelchair would be able to play with those, not maybe utilizing the playground piece, but still being included with all the other kids there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Again, I was thinking that could offset some of the other things you had budgeted, but I get, I get where you
Yeah, so capital budget item, we, we can only do certain things with it. We won't go over the 425. It'll allow us to add significantly more pieces, like things underneath the playground, musical things on the playground so that we have more inclusive pieces that way.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Well, that was part of my question as well is that, I mean, if we had 425 for a budget and we're getting grant for 80-some thousand dollars, if we could stay with the same picture that we had before of what that would look like and then move that 86,000 that we've saved into some of the other future projects?
We could. We totally could. We would get that playground piece and a swing set and wood chips on two-thirds of the playground.
But we wouldn't get the ground.
We wouldn't get the ground. Like because that, we have to use the grant on that playground piece. So we would have to spend the $157,000 and then we would spend $175,000 for the flooring.
Well, the way your memo wrote, read though, it said it gave us the opportunity to buy a larger piece. So my assumption was if we stayed with a smaller piece, the grant would be the same ratio.
No.
The grant is for a specific piece.
Yes. You, they gave you
So I guess the way to look at it is you, if you build a house, you have a foundation. Foundation cost is
Oh, I understand that. I understand that.
But one-story versus two-story. We're getting a two-story for the price.
So like I said, we cannot proceed then if they have another grant opportunity in the spring. We could try apply for that with a lower-cost piece and get that amount and, or get an amount.
All right. That clarifies. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks. I appreciate the questions too because years past, we don't get as many and then comes later in this question, so ask away as this goes through. Continuing on with the agenda, review of the 2023 water and sewer, water and sewer Jenny's going to present these for
Okay, so we're going to start with the sewer budget. If you can draw your attention to page four, schedule three.
Is that on?
It is on the iPad.
No, is your microphone on?
I don't know. I might not be close enough.
Yes, it is.
Sorry. Okay. Page four, schedule three. This schedule presents changes in the working capital within the four sewer utility funds and are defined on the last page, page five for your reference. Overall, each fund is projected to remain positive and is maintaining a very healthy financial position due to stable growth and net position as was reflected in the 2021 audit results. Other than the reallocation of the personnel costs that the mayor noted at the last budget meeting, there are no other significant changes to report. Lastly, although rates are recommended to remain the same in 2023, an adjustment will most likely be proposed for the 2024 budget to offset the rising operation costs. That is the sewer budget, if you have any questions on that one. Nope. Okay. Schedule three for the water budget, also on page three. The water utility funds are very similar to the sewer utility. This schedule also presents the changes in working capital within the four funds of the utility, which are defined on the last page, page four. Results are indicating each fund is projected to have adequate balances, as is also recognized by the Public Service Commission estimates, and therefore the utility is not qualified for a simplified rate case adjustment for 2023. Any questions on the water?
So I guess to put this more in later persons, we're not looking for a rate increase. We did shift over some of our costs from looking at some of the salaries and how they work with the utility to the utility out of operating to help balance our operating budget and to fairly distribute those salaries to where they're actually being used. And even with that, we're still able to maintain the rates that we had for last year.
What's the mechanism for a non-simplified rate change? Mechanism for requesting a non-
It's a worksheet that they essentially fill out.
I know. It's quite a process. I haven't done it myself, but my understanding is if you go with the non-simplified, a lot of times your rate increase will end up less than the simplified.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. I thought the question was, how do you get a simplified rate increase? That is a simple form that we fill out and plug in the numbers and I think history has shown.
Is there a way to sample that to see if, if that would be the case? Is there like a worksheet or something that we can compare that?
He wants to know, is there a way of evaluating, doing a full-blown, to go forward with a full-blown loan rate case versus a simplified case? In this case, where we're not even qualifying for a simplified case, we wouldn't, it's not even a starter, so I think that you would
I don't know what goes into that, so.
Yeah, so, so to start with, we do the simplified rate case, and that's what we've used the last few years. If we don't qualify for that, there's no way we qualify for the more extensive one. So it's kind of like a lower hanging fruit.
Yeah, they basically look at your annual report from the prior year.
Sure.
And then they do a financial projection, look at what you have for capital expenditures and tell you immediately if you qualify or not. So they also look at the current, the closer capital expenditures, and I can tell you by looking at the five-year, we wouldn't be eligible for a full-blown rate case. Plus, it's very expensive. It's, you know, there's an additional cost.
I got you.
So we're much better off, and the auditors even concur that we go with a simplified rate case as often as we can.
Okay.
And it's typically a 3%. And it's been working quite well.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the two budgets? All right. Continuing on, discussion of ARPA funds. This was requested to be put on here for a discussion of the cow. I guess I will, I'll start conversation on this. When we first received these funds, my goal at least, and I think most, a lot of you share this, is that these, nothing's free. So all these trillions of dollars that the federal government has disseminated down to us local governments, eventually going to have to be paid for by somebody, and it's probably not any of us sitting in this room. Maybe John, but I don't think, I don't think the rest of us. But, you know, but because of that, since they're going to be paid for probably with future income taxes and different taxes of some sort, I was trying to find some way of how, how can we spend it that we can have some long-term savings for people, like essentially buying something that we would have to buy in the future and spend citizens' monies, monies on. Now, looking at that, you might look and say, well, why don't we do roads? And there's some, a number of things that we could do that would, you know, bridges and stuff like that. None of that qualifies. So they have a very specific like grid work of things you can spend the money on and, and have it qualify. Like you could do employee one-time bonuses, you can give grants for businesses, you can, anything COVID-related, like if you want to do some mitigation for like, you know, buy masks for everyone, all that. Well, obviously I looked at that and didn't think that was appropriate. Staff's recommendation, and it's one that I concur with, is our water utility, you guys all went through that, we paid R and M to do that, I think it was R and M to do that study three years ago or so, looking at where our water system is and what we really need to do to shore it up and make it a viable water system going forward in the future. And that number was kind of big. And it's not one that we, the water utility or our taxpayers can, can support to implement that plan. But one of the things we could do is use these funds to, as we expand our water system, to use those funds so we don't have to have the citizens paying for it. So that's why our recommendation is to use it for the expansion of our water system because expanding utilities is one of the things that the, the federal government allows you to do. So that's how we got to where our current philosophy is, but if you guys want to weigh in or have questions, I'd be glad to answer whatever I can and we'll go from there.
So the, the water study is paid by who?
The water study we paid for about three, four years ago?
By the city?
You paid for it, yes. So we paid to have a water study done for, you know, what's the state of our utility and, you know, our
It doesn't come out of, that's not on the water utility side?
No, I'm sorry. Yes, the water, the water utility paid for the study, yes.
Can I just ask what the amount was that we're looking at to have to spend?
About 2.26 million. We got half one year and half another. We have till 2024 to allocate it? To allocate it or actually spend it?
To complete it. Isn't completion
I think we have to spend it by 2026, by, by the end of 2024, we have to have a plan for
And those are the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay. What is the amount of the waters, what was the amount that the water study came out as?
More than that.
More than that, so.
Scott might be able to answer that.
Okay, so water studies, different things that they looked at. For example, we've got a couple subdivisions that are coming up that would probably need a full, take all the water, we have to relay all the lines. On the southeast kind of portion, we're looking for possibly another water tower or well down there, future long-term growth. You're looking also to, for example, as we did reimbursements. One of my suggestions, again, Glen and Muskego Lakes, we, we upsized the water so that we could take it further down 36. Why we did the upsize of the waters so that we can move commercial down there.
So one of the things, and that's a key point to bring up, it's not just expanding the water system to make it healthy. If we expand water and sewer to certain areas, like Highway 36 is really our next and only left of commercial tracks of land that may be developable in the future, that if we put the infrastructure in there, businesses would come, which would give us a double whammy of strengthening our water system and then giving us additional tax base, commercial tax base is what, and that's what I think a lot of us want to see. So that's one of the thoughts as well. So like the reimbursements for when we did the Glen and Muskego Lakes, our plan was when they, they, they paid to run water down there, we paid to make the pipe bigger so we can extend that water further to make it more viable, the developable area going down that way. Does that answer your question? Without, I don't have the exact number.
Yeah. So this would just be like a little bit of that? You would just
Well
kind of get it started and then would we have to start paying for the rest of it? Or are you just putting it in a fund?
Right now it's sitting in a fund, so we use part of it for that expansion. And then if we expand it further down that road, that might be something to look at. Or if it didn't, one of the cases we were looking at possibly doing it was when Fleet Farm was originally looking at coming here, extending water over there, but we couldn't provide the flows for them, so we allowed them to do a well instead. But, you know, so we look at areas, at least I look at areas that would help cause economic development as well.
And is that, the water would be the only thing that you could use this for?
No, we can use it for a whole host of things, but I think it's the most viable one that has that goal of trying to save long-term future dollars.
Okay. And this is just kind of off the top of my head too. What about something, because I know eventually, aren't we going to need fire department? Is that anything that, no, that couldn't?
Hydrants, but that's about it.
So the water utility is paid for, is funded by how?
Ratepayers.
By ratepayers. So this would be a, I guess, a targeted tax savings for certain individuals in the city?
No, that's why I want to, I think it's important to point out like we did at the Glen of Muskego Lakes of why we paid, use these ARPA funds to expand it down there so we can increase our commercial tax base, which benefits everyone.
Okay, but how does that, how does that benefit someone with a well?
Because you pay taxes and by having more commercial tax base.
But if you're, but if you're on the water system, what does it do for you?
You get that.
Your rate, it evens out your rate?
Goal isn't the water, the goal is to have the, the commercial development and having commercial developable areas. So right now Highway 36 has the land, but it doesn't have any utilities out there so that the, the likelihood of a business coming out there without the utilities is a lot less likely. So if we can use these ARPA funds to kind of spark economic development, I think that makes more sense than like we did by Walmart where we ran the, ran all the sewer and water to get that development, but tiffed it all. And so we're not getting the benefit of those, those tax dollars right now because we tiffed that area.
So, so that would be my next question. If we didn't put this in a utility, we'd go about this the way we've always gone about it, through, through the water utility, we'd pay for it, right?
Well, maybe, maybe not. Maybe we'd do a tiff.
Or a tiff.
Yeah.
But I'm still, I'm still lost on how a, how it benefits everybody. It's, it's really benefiting the users of, of the water.
I completely disagree.
Because what, it'll, it'll hold their rates down.
I, I completely disagree. I think the, the long-term great, greater benefit of this is the having the economic development.
I still look at this as a targeted tax benefit. It's, it's, it's going into a, a fund where not everybody is using it in, in the city. Is there other places that someone, that we can use it on that everybody benefits on?
If you use sewer, you're only going to, you, you could use that same argument.
Use it for sewer, yeah.
But that's, but again
But you pay for sewer, right, through MSMD?
No, well, again, the sewer rate users.
So not everyone's on sewer. There's people with septic throughout the community. Yeah. So, I mean, those people, your argument don't benefit, but my, my thought is it sparks economic development.
Well, I understand that side of it, but I'm still looking at, this is a, a targeted tax break, in my opinion, or subsidy, subsidy.
And I can go through this quickly. I'll just, I'll just summarize on things that are acceptable. COVID-19 mitigations, you really need me to go through the vaccines and all that stuff that, because I don't think that's even, that's a non-starter. So you can use it for COVID-19 mitigation. Behavior healthcare, so mental health treatment, substance abuse and crisis intervention. Public health resources, payroll for health, public health and similar employees. Essential workers, so you can do premium pay for, and retroactive premium pay for essential workers. Workers and family, you can do unemployment training, food and housing, financial security assistance, survivor benefits, small business loans, grants and counseling programs. Impacted industries, so you can like target tourism, travel, hospitality and nonprofits with grants and such. Public sector, you can rehire public sector employees to pre-pandemic levels and replace any lost revenue from the, from the pandemic. Health disparities, so you can look at community health works, public benefit navigators. Again, more of that, I hate to use the term, but fluffy stuff. Housing in neighborhoods, you can, you can do this to impact all those homeless people we have in Muskego. Affordable housing and housing vouchers and residential counseling. Educational disparities, so you can put this towards early learning services, school district resources and educational services. Healthy environments for childcare and enhanced child welfare. Or you can use it for sewer and water, for, for any drinking water, drinking or wastewater infrastructure, cybersecurity, remediation of lead pipes and stormwater and green infrastructure. You can use it to expand broadband, so if we want to pay to expand, pay for broadband expansion. But that's it. There's your list.
Ironically, last week after the plant commission meeting, Scott and myself were talking to one of our developers who specifically said that if there was water and other utilities on 36, he would certainly move in that direction, which leads me to the big picture. And the big picture is that the more we develop, the greater our, our, our tax base grows commercially, it benefits all of us, the users and non-users. So there's a, there's a win-win-win to this.
Robert, I think if we looked at it and focused on the expansion side, I get where you're coming from. If all we did was replace everybody's main lines to keep rates down, like that, it could be a case to be made if that's all we use it for. But if we were using it specifically for expansion and new growth and not for those to keep rates down, I think it could be really viewed as not something to benefit just the water users. And I'm on a well. I don't use the water side, so.
I was just wondering if there was other avenues. I mean, it just seems like this is targeted more, and if there's something that isn't, you know, is, is there something that we could look at, you know?
I think you see from the list that our choices are pretty
Pretty slim.
I mean, the one thing that, you know, maybe might benefit everyone is if we run, say we replace water down a road that needs to be replaced, and we have to tear up the road to run the water down. Well, then we can use the cost of replacing that road from this because it's part of running the water down there. So we could do something like that.
So how do we put this into the fund and segregate it so we know what's being used for it?
It's already segregated into the utility. We parked it in the utility to start with, and it's segregated in there.
What were considered, I guess, the question on the essential workers back pay? What does that, like, retroactively apply it to payroll and?
I think it's a slippery slope.
Right? If we said, oh, all the payroll that we did during COVID, this covers that, and now there's money in payroll. I'm just asking, I'm not saying that that's a way, right? But I mean-
The one thing you got to be careful of is spending it, getting too creative with it and then getting audited and having to pay it back.
Yeah, and the verbiage that they had, pay for people that were considered essential workers. And I know that that was an interesting term that we had for a while, but now does that mean that? Yeah.
Yeah, is that a, like, is that a thing? Two years of payroll for-
Most of our, all our public works, police, most, a big chunk of our staff is considered essential. There's very few that aren't.
And the only thing with that is that covers a previous situation. It doesn't really help us going forward.
Well, then you open up what you can spend the money on.
If you could wash it that way.
I'm not trying to like launder money.
You're trying to launder money.
But you're, the idea that we're a city, we lost money, right, over that time because people weren't working. They're now giving us money to reimburse, like, we made payroll, but I don't know, I guess I'm not advocating even that. I just don't know if that's what they mean.
Some communities haven't tried doing that. I'm just, I guess I'm trying to be more conservative with it, that what happens if they come back and say, no, that wasn't right? The result is you pay it back. Sharon? That's true.
For that?
Yeah, right, during COVID, we did receive a grant for that, and we covered a lot of payroll and things during the actual pandemic because like, police, I think we used it for mostly. We covered almost all, like $400,000 worth of police payroll that year, and it helped with our budget because we had, we did have a big drop in revenue on certain items.
Would, would anything that's on the police budget qualify? Because I know they had some pretty big ticket items, I'm just curious if.
Nothing jumps out at me from what I'm seeing here, but I also should point out, the big ticket items you're talking about was in the capital budget, and we don't levy taxpayer dollars for that. We've been using fund balances, either, mostly the landfill, so we-
I can see that this can help grow the tax base. At what point in time would you have some specifics on what we can do with these funds? And that way, maybe that addresses Rob's concern that this isn't being used as a one-time aid for people who are sewer users.
So, again, the one that I did present to, came up, the Glen and Meskego Lakes. I put in the memo, we should use it for the water or reimbursement for the sanitary sewer. I don't know if you guys ever, you said let's park and discuss it for the ARPA funds, so I don't know if that ever got approved. But again, that was water and sewer, there was two reimbursements. If Fleet Farm would have gone the way that, if we would have got on water, but we couldn't make it with the fire flow, you would have been presented with something saying, we needed to do something, and this would have been a very large cost for it. As things come up, I'm willing to, I'm bringing them up to you guys to let you know. Those would have been two huge items right away.
Well, the clock is running, and that's the only concern I have.
We have some ideas.
Major project and build a tower or something and dig a well.
We have some ideas to do it, but I was waiting for you to, like, you guys discussed it. If you want me to present them, I can, in a month, I can get you a bunch of projects.
And I caution on us committing to exactly something very specific at this time because I'll use Fleet, I keep on going back to Fleet Farm, but I'll use them as an example. They came out of nowhere. Biotech building came out of nowhere. I'd kind of like to maybe keep this in our back pocket for a little bit. If a developer comes forward and wants to develop somewhere, well, first, let's see if they, maybe they'll pave it around the pipe. Well, then we don't have to use it in that area, you know? But if they're like, oh, then once they find out the cost of running the pipe, they're like, oh, we're going to go to Franklin because they have the water there already, well, then we can pull this out and say, well, maybe, you know, maybe we can help you with this.
Because, you know, 36, 40 months goes pretty fast.
I know, yeah. No, I'm not saying to sit on it till the last minute, but I think we could probably sit on it, you know, for the next nine months or so. Because they can come up-
I'd like to see some, you know, I'd like to see-
I know what you're, like, I mean, we don't, I don't problem doing that as long as we come forward with a plan and you're giving us the flexibility that, okay, if something else comes up, you're going to have to prove anything to something else anyway that, you know, if you want to see-
Because I have no idea what it costs to dig a well or what, you know, fully watering Highway 36 from point A to point B would cost. I have no idea what that-
Well, the other problem too is, and I'm giving you heads up, the cost to put water main in right now, it is through the rough. It has gone up.
Yeah.
It is, it's just extremely expensive.
It's probably the timing of not wanting to do it right now either. But having a plan, as Alderman Kabaki is looking for is, you know, maybe we could come forward with, you know, what might be.
Yeah.
The plan.
Yeah, I mean, if you-
You know, that's something that we're-
That's not a problem. We can, you know, give me, say, give me, I think we have a cow meeting. Let's do the first cow meeting in December. First meeting, we'll have a cow.
Why don't we do it after the first year?
Yeah.
A first year?
Give yourself some time, Scott.
Well, I got some things to do, I can do it, okay? So give me like in January, I can have myself and-
Bring it forward January or February.
Yeah, January, February, I can, Scott and I already have some from utilities. We have ideas of where this could be. I do suggest, again, I didn't know if it was officially done, but to give that little money for the water main, for the reimbursement.
So for clarification, because we're talking about ARPA funds, is everyone okay with using it, allocating it for the, a portion of it, for that Glen at Meskego Lakes that we talked about?
Sure.
And I'm just asking it for the water reimbursement?
Yes.
Just the water? And I think of that price tag was just shy of $200,000, I think.
Was that for that upsizing thing?
Yep, yes.
The reimbursement makes it sound like we're giving them money for something, so we're paying for an increase, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're paying for the upsize.
Yeah. It just sounds better. And just to let you know, if anyone has not gone down there, you should go down there, and you should see how many homes are being built and how many more are being planned. So I'm just letting you know that is a pretty big growth area right now, so.
Any other discussion on ARPA? All right, we'll be back to you January, February with what might be with this, so you can kind of get some ideas.
Great, thank you.
Moving on, discussion regarding Durham Drive road repair due to the Great Water Alliance, essentially the Waukesha Water Project.
Okay, so this can be kind of a moot point. So out there, they've been fixing Durham Drive. They have about another 5,000, 6,000 square yards of road that needs to get repaired along Durham Drive. And we're talking from the woods intersection all the way down to North Cape. So last week, Great Water Alliance approached us and said, hey, if you wanted to do all the road, all the way down, we'll give you a change order cost.
Scott, can we start with why we're here?
Why we're here?
The withholding of the permit and how we got to that point.
Well, okay, so we were-
No one was happy with, no one is happy, I'm sure, with the progress and the type of restoration we've been getting from the water project coming through myself and staff, and I'm sure all of you included. So the only thing that we've been having for ammunition of making sure it's going to get done is we withheld the permit for that last section on Ryan Drive.
400 feet about there.
About 400 feet, and we told them, you're not getting this permit until you get this done. Well, so they, instead of, I don't know why, but they, so then they moved on to Franklin and brought the pipe up. So now essentially, they got the pipe like here and here. Restoration is still not done, and what they've told, and they are going to do, we're going to do, is either release the permit or we're going to move on for the season, and then we'll get back to it when we get back to it. So Waukesha, the city of Waukesha, the mayor and his staff reached out to me of, can we work something out to get this permit released? And I said, well, I need some assurances, and then, you know, this is the only thing I have to make sure that this contractor is going to come back, and I have no faith in this contractor at this point. So they, essentially, we issued the permit for that last part to the city of Waukesha, not the contractor, with a list, a whole host of demands, I'll say, that they agreed to do, the city agreed to do, which gives us more faith in getting it done. So we issued that last Friday. Part of that is now you can continue with your road.
They offered, and they said, for this portion that was remaining, they would give us a change order if we wanted to do a change order, and then we wouldn't pay for it till 2023 for the entire road. So they gave us a cost estimate. The only thing is, we checked the cost estimate, and through our road program, we get a better price. So we, the thing is kind of a moot point. I'm not asking for a change order to do it because it would cost more money if I asked for a change order from you guys to do it. So they're going to repair about 5,000 to 6,000 square yards still, that road, but it's still going to look like Tetris, just kind of letting you know it's going to be here and there. But I'm not asking for you to give me money for a change order because their cost, we get it cheaper in a road program. We double-checked it.
So they're going to be fixing their part, and then we're going to come back and add to it, so the road's more uniformly done.
But I'm not asking you for a change order. If we do decide and might change in our road program, we'll do pay for it through our road program because we get better prices.
So that all just changed in the last few hours, so.
Yeah, just to let you know.
This is more of an update than a request for permission, which initially started-
By the way, they are out there on Monday, and they started laying that pipe on Ryan Drive.
I'm sure they did.
So.
As long as we have this on, is there any questions that we can maybe answer on this project, if it's on the agenda?
We are hoping by the rules of every punch list item and everything should be done, 100% by, we are looking at, I believe I put the deadline is either August 1st or July 1st of 2023.
And the gaping holes will be filled?
Yes.
So that is a sanitary lateral that needs to be replaced out there. What makes it worse is they've opened that up twice now, and when they opened it up again on Saturday, they didn't have the right parts. And so now there's a shield and a couple metal plates on there, and it's very frustrating because I think the parts are in Illinois, so they got to get the parts here. And once that put in, then they'll finish that section of the road. But that's one of the things that they have till October 31st to get done, as a-
But as we've been notified and find out about some of these gaping holes that are actual road hazards, and let us know if you see them, because we let them know right away that, like, get out there today and fix them because that's one of those things where you'll see on our council agenda tonight, we're denying a claim for something that we're not liable for. You are liable once you're made aware that there's a hazard and you don't address it within a timely manner. So we're making sure that at least that type of stuff gets temporary fills and everything as needed. Okay? Thank you. Any communications miscellaneous business? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
All is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned from the committee a whole at 6:22.